Thank you all for being here. Today is Monday, August 11, 2025. It's currently 7:00 PM and I'm going to bring this regular meeting of the City of Flemeth City Council to order. And we will start with a roll call.
Jessica Dretic.
President.
Diane Crocker.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Present.
Mike Caseon.
Present.
Lucy Nielsen.
Here.
Ricky Salsam.
Present.
Mr. McMoran.
Present.
And then staff, want to introduce yourselves?
Yes, Chelsea Starnes is the city manager. We have Chris Workman on the line, city manager.
And Ashley DeGill, city attorney from Barry Elsner.
Perfect. On tonight's agenda, we have a public hearing on PC 25-03 annexations, followed by public comments. And for record, that public comment period would be things that are not in the public hearing. And then we'll have our consent agenda. We have two items of new business. A discussion on the Affordable Housing Project Proposal with Commonwealth Development. And then just following up on an earlier discussion on potentially adding a representative to Benton County Historical Society from our ranks. And then we have an ordinance around authorizing the city to apply to ELCD Planning Grant. And then we'll have our reports and correspondence. So with no further ado, we'll start on our first agenda item of the public hearing for PC 2503. This is a quasi judicial public hearing, so I will be following a very strict script. So if you're not used to hearing me talk this way, it's Ashley's fault. So I will now open the joint hearing on case files PC 2503, an application for annexation of 10 island properties. 10 individual tax lots and owners are identified by the map and table provided in the staff report dated August 1, 2025. The city is the applicant requesting to annex these properties into city limits because they are completely surrounded by city properties. Total additional land would be 15.454 acres with a mix of low and medium density residential, industrial, and public right-of-way lands. The order of tonight's proceedings shall be, one, a staff report, two, additional correspondence, three, the applicant's presentation, four, public testimony in favor of the application, five, public testimony in opposition of the application, six, neutral testimony, seven, rebuttals by the applicant, eight, questions for staff from the city council, nine, we will close the public testimony. And I want to be clear that once public testimony is closed, we cannot take any additional comments into the record. So all comments should be made during the public testimony portions. And then 10, the council will deliberate, and 11, if the council would like, make a final decision. So for more context on the public testimony piece, the following information relates to public testimony portion of the hearing, which will occur later in the proceedings. Due to the limited number of people who are here to provide public testimony, we'll ask that everyone just keeps their comments to no more than five minutes. And I'll let you know, or I think our council president will let you know when your time is up. And usually she'll give a 30-second warning as well, just so.
Or stand and yell one of the other.
And then we will first hear those who are here in person for public testimony, followed by anyone participating remotely. And I don't believe we have anyone remotely right now. Okay. And for those in attendance, if you have not already, please fill out a testimony form, which I think I have one, and submit it to the city recorder at this time. Staff, I already asked you that question. So the last note is that any questions should be addressed through me as the chair of this meeting. So not to each other, to presenter, or to another applicant. And then when you're speaking, please state both your name and your city of residence, so that we can make sure we have that on the record. And then finally, the city council will make a decision tonight, or the matter could be continued to a time and date certain in the future. And if the matter is continued to a time and date certain in the future, this will be the only notice of that date that you receive. The criteria that apply to the decision are listed in the staff report. These are the criteria the city council must use in reaching a decision. Testimony and any evidence provided should be directed at these criteria or other criteria believed to apply to the decision. Please describe how your comments relate to the criteria. Despite the importance of other issues or concerns, the city council must base its decision on whether the evidence shows the application complies with the criteria or not. If the city council agrees that the annexations meet the criteria, its decision will be forwarded to the electorate of the city at the May 2025 general election. I hope so. Thank you. The May 2026 general election, which will decide which properties to annex or not. So we are not deciding the final, final decision. We are approving the land use hearing or not, and then that decision would go to the voters. Failure to raise an issue in sufficient detail to allow the city council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other concerns relating to proposed conditions of approval in sufficient detail to allow the city council to respond to the issue precludes actions for damages in circuit court. Isn't this fun? Now I ask the members of the city council to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest, including any site visits. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from this hearing. Would anyone like to disclose any of those items? Counselor Crocker?
I drove by the South 19th Street. That's all I did. But I didn't know where the addresses were.
Okay.
I intend to participate.
Yes.
Perfect. I will say the same. I think I've driven or walked past. I'll say all of them. So I intend to participate. I don't believe that will influence my decisions. To start us off, we will now hear the staff report, which I believe will be city manager Chris Workman.
Let me thank you, Your Honor. I'll just mic check again. Is everybody hearing me okay?
Yeah, we got you.
Apologize for not having video and having a little technical difficulty there. So I took my tie off and you'll just get the audio tonight. I'm going to work through presumption that the city council has had an opportunity to read through the staff report already, but I do want to highlight some key points. As the mayor kind of summarized with these island annexations, these are individual lots or areas that are completely surrounded by properties that are within city limits already, are completely surrounded by city limits, if you will. So the term island is really sufficient. It's really kind of an island of the county that's completely surrounded by city properties. They receive the same services that their neighbors get, primarily public safety. I list off everything else there, access to the parks and everything else. But they currently don't pay for any of those services through property taxes, like the neighbors on, all the way around them do. The other issue that comes up with these islands is through our code enforcement, because they're not properties within city limits, the Flemeth Municipal Code does not apply to them. So when we get items like high grass complaints or other types of common nuisances, the city doesn't have any enforcement action on them. We have to find other means by way of the county or the fire district to try to get some type of enforcement for things like high grass or weeds or similar types of kind of minor nuisances. It just adds to confusion on, you know, why one piece of property would be in city limits and the other one would not be when they're right next to each other in the middle of town. So for those two reasons, the city council made this a priority to identify and go through the process of annexing these island properties into the city. As noted in the opening section here, properties that are currently zoned are used for residential uses. Even if approved by the council tonight and approved by the voters in May, they would still have a three-year time period before the annexation would be applicable to them. Or if the property were to sell in that three years, they would immediately, upon the sale of the property or transfer of ownership of the property, come into the city limits at that time. Commercial and industrial properties, in which there are a couple here, as identified in the table in the staff report, those commercial and industrial properties, they would come into city limits immediately upon approval of the voters. So just a little bit of a nuance in the distinction between how residential annexed properties are handled as opposed to commercial or industrial. I'll just note, the planning commission did hold a public hearing back on July 21st. They approved the findings of facts that were provided in that staff report and did approve of the annexations and forward them onto the city council, which is why you're taking a look at them this evening. Following tonight's public hearing, as has been mentioned again, if the city council approves these properties for annexation based on the criteria identified in the staff report, then they'll go onto the ballot in May of 2026. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that. I think I had that wrong in your script. And May 2026, and the voters will get to approve or not approve the annexations of these different areas of island properties. So that's kind of the type of thing we're looking at. There's a note in the staff report about a couple of comments that were received from property owners that will be impacted. I'll draw your attention those. And then the findings of facts, I'm going to take some time there because that's really what you'll be looking to approve this evening. So starting with number one, these subject ten properties have a combined total size approximately 15.454 acres. They're mixed with zoning between low-density residential, medium-density residential, some industrial. And then there's a small piece of public right-of-way up on North 7th Street that we're looking to annex as well. All 10 properties fit the definition of an island property, each being completely surrounded by properties incorporated within the city of Flemeth city limits. Number three, no development is planned for any of these properties at this time. Number four, the annexation is consistent with the purposes of the Flemeth Development Code, policies of the comprehensive plan, all requirements of all city ordinances and other applicable policies and standards adopted by the city. Number five, the city is able to provide water, wastewater, storm drain, park, and street services upon annexation of the properties. And finally, number six, upon approval by the planning commission city council, island annexations must also be approved by the voters. I'll note, just so there's no confusion, if a property owner comes to the city with an application to annex their property to the city, and all of the property owners are in favor of that, that type of annexation by more recent state law is not allowed to be referred to the voters for approval or not. But island annexations are specifically exempted from that state law. And so an island annexation that's not 100% favorable by the property owners has to, does have to go out for vote of the people still. So I know that was a change several years ago, but it is still applicable for island annexations to go out for vote of the people, which, as we've talked about. So that's where that's coming from. Next, let me just go through criteria real quick. This is getting coming right out of the development code. The city is applying to have these island properties annexed, as shown upon the map that's included in the staff report. The map, I'll note, gives a general area of where the properties are and lists the addresses. And then at the very end of the staff report is a more comprehensive table that addresses and identifies each individual property, the address, the ownership, the current zoning, and some additional information about size and whatnot. So I'll turn the council's attention to both the map as a general reference, but to the table for more specific reference. The city is primarily seeking to annex these lots to the city to bring them into the same standing as their immediately adjacent neighboring properties. And the city will be required to send each of these to the electorate upon approval, May 2026 general election. The city is meeting all of its obligations under B for the timing and when this will go forward. And requirements for number C, the city as the applicant. We did not try to verify consent of each of the individual property owners. We just looked at the island annexation process and we're following that. But with that process, every property owner was notified about this public process and about the public hearing, both at the planning commission level and at tonight's city council level. The legal descriptions for each of the properties have been prepared. Those will be prepared in ballot measures upon approval of the city council tonight. And those ballot measures will be approved and go forward on to Benton County as well. Number three is the map of the area that I referenced earlier. And number four, sufficient information for city staff to allow completion of the impact analysis. We've essentially, typically for annexations, we're looking at the highest, most intense use of these properties. A little difficult again because on that this island annexation level, there is no development planned, but we still wanted to have an idea of what the impact on the city's services would be if they were all annexed in. And so there's a kind of rough analysis there based on low-density residential, medium-density residential, light industrial. And then a more general description based on conversations with Public Works about the city's ability to provide municipal services to these properties. There's no concerns. They're small enough properties. They're spread out throughout the community, throughout the city. So, you know, we really don't have any concerns about being able to provide city services to these properties upon annexation. So we are very confident of the city's ability to do that. On number, number five, we give notice to the school, the library, and fire. They were all given notice of this. We didn't get any feedback from any of them. So our code's pretty clear. If we don't receive feedback, the assumption is that the impact will be fairly minimal. And again, with, with really nine properties, not counting the, the street public right-of-way up on North 7th Street, they're fairly spread out. None of them are overly large or would have a significant amount of development on them. So again, the city staff has got pretty good confidence that these won't have adverse impacts on, on the community via the school, fire, library, et cetera. Staff doesn't foresee any large off-site public facilities that need to be built in order to support these. Again, the infrastructure is in place to support them already. And then number eight, we did not provide a type of conceptual site plan. These are all individual properties. They're going through the island property annexation process, not necessarily our standard owner-initiated annexation. So no, no conceptual plan was provided for these. The map amendment rezone will essentially be rezoned to kind of the default, I guess is a good word to put it. If the, if the current zoning within the urban growth boundary, for example, is low-density residential, then once annexed into the city, it would be the city zoning of R1, which is our low-density residential. Properties that are zoned in their urban growth benefit for industrial, upon annexation would come in and be light industrial, and so on. So with all of these annexations, we're not looking to think the term is like to up zones or to increase density or increase the ability of any of these properties to develop. They'll be coming in at their kind of natural default zoning when they're annexed. There was no fee associated with this one. The cover number 10. And D, in reviewing the applications, we'd be, the applications to all be complete. E is for staff evaluation. Again, with unknown development for the proposed residential industrial sites. We really just don't foresee at the staff level any large amount of development that's going to negatively impact the city here. So required utility services in light of commitments already made to other developments won't be a problem. So this criteria is met as well. And lastly, for the review criteria, city staff have reviewed this. We do believe that it's consistent with not only the city's development code, but also our municipal, or the municipal code, the comprehensive plan specifically on urbanization, which deals with infill and development of properties that are currently outside city limits and inside their urban growth boundary. Didn't go through those in a lot of detail, but just give a couple of examples there of areas where that is satisfied. Included citizen involvement, again, notification of the public to participate in these hearing processes. Notification with the newspapers. We looked at the housing policies within the comp plan. Again, these residential properties will help with that. Urbanization policies within the comprehensive plan are referenced as well. As lastly, the public facilities and services, which, just to repeat, have all been looked at and staff doesn't foresee any issues with any public services being provided if these properties were to want to hook into city services or want to develop at some point in the future. Pity number three, all these properties again are contiguous to the city. In fact, they're surrounded, which might split some islands. And number four, annexation of property must be a benefit to the city and community of Flemeth. Now, there's a little bit of question on this, some discussion at the planning commission level on what is the benefit to the city. Primarily, it's, it's getting rid of some of the confusion again about why some properties are inside city limits and others aren't. There's also some financial benefit, obviously, as these properties come into the city. They're going to, in addition to paying their county property taxes and school property taxes, they'll also pay city property taxes. That helps for, you know, helps pay for things like the police department, public safety, most of the staff. Well, a lot of the staff at city hall get paid through, through property taxes as well. A lot of the city services, parks, et cetera, are all paid through, paid for through the general fund, through property taxes. So this would put them on a more level playing field with their neighboring properties. Didn't see any examples here where these properties have been used for significant industrial or agricultural purposes. So five and six are kind of moot. And number seven, nothing here exceeded the 30 acres. That wasn't applicable. And then number eight. Eight is, I believe we talked about in the past, it would be if properties were annexed into the city, they would need some type of a pedestrian connectivity into the existing pedestrian system or the sidewalk system. Staff is recommending a condition of approval on these island annexations that if the city were to move forward with annexing these properties and they were approved by the voters for annexation, the staff would recommend as a condition of that approval that none of these property owners be required by the city to install a sidewalk adjacent to their property until such time that the property owner submits an application to the city for development of their property that would, you know, if they were inside city limits, it would require a sidewalk to be installed at the time of development. So, you know, we've got some language in our development code that allows the city to require any property offensive limits to put a sidewalk in adjacent to their property in order to fill in gaps and sidewalks. That's, that's a pretty big financial hardship in addition to the increased or the new property taxes that'll be levied here. So staff would recommend that we, that we not invoke that portion of the development or of our municipal code, that we not require sidewalks of these until they decide they want to develop. And at that time, depending on the type of development, we would look at installing sidewalks at that time. So with that condition of approval and those findings of facts, I'll go ahead and conclude my staff report. Happy to answer any clarifying questions about the staff report. Otherwise, I can ask more specific questions later on.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or clarifications specific to the staff report or staff at this time? And again, these should be limited to the information in the report. We can deliberate and ask broader questions later.
I have two clarifying comments for you, Mayor.
Yes, please.
So first, I think earlier today, staff provided this legal description of the properties, which is just further identifying where those locations are, as provided by these legal descriptions. Second, I wanted to add a slight revision to our recommended motions at the end of the, of the staff report. There's a legal requirement that in island annexation be adopted by either ordinance or resolution, and your code requires via ordinance. So I added in to the recommended motion, a final requirement to direct staff to draft an ordinance, essentially accomplishing the same if you were to recommend approval. So you would essentially recommend approval and then direct us to draft an ordinance and come back to council on a certain date and time. And I wrote it out for you here.
Stop reading.
Write it yourself.
Okay, thank you. I did not see any further clarifying questions for staff. So then, is there any additional correspondence beyond those items included in the agenda packet? Does anyone have anything they would like to submit to the record? Okay. And does this count as additional correspondence or is this?
This legal description?
Yeah.
It's additional evidence. So that was provided within, you know, it was provided earlier today. In your discretion, you could decide to leave the record open for more time for individuals to, who are interested in reviewing this further. But people, we confirmed last week that people were provided sufficient notice. This doesn't change any of the notice requirements, anything like that. It just adds further clarity as far as who or what properties this are.
Okay. I'm not seeing any additional correspondence anyone would like to submit. So we will now hear the applicant's presentation, and the applicant is limited to 20 minutes for their presentation. So is that back to city manager?
Yes.
All right.
Just, I'll just summarize real quick. I won't take near 20 minutes. So the staff report is the bulk of this. The only thing I'll put for the, on the narrative here from the, the city council or the city as the applicant is again, just to reference back to the Flemeth Comprehensive Plan. This has been in the conference plan for a couple of years now to help identify these properties and bring them in to the city through the island annexation process. It was not identified as like a top 10 priority for the city this year when the planner started working on this topic and this issue. We hadn't finalized that top 10 or top 13 yet. But we're far enough along and there's been enough of a gap. Um, but we're far enough along and there's been enough of a gap between the last time we did this in twenty eighteen and now. Um, that, uh, delaying this further just. Exacerbates the problem, if you will, because there just becomes more and more of these islands that come in. So. Um, I, I think the question I've heard in the past is why now? And, and the response would be, um. Uh, again, because the, the longer you let pilot annex, the island properties. Kind of coexist or co-mingle with inside city limits without being actually inside city limits. It just becomes more and more difficult to annex them later. Um, from a policy standpoint, we're probably, um, be looking at bringing some language to you at some point in the future to. To put a trigger on when these would happen, like as soon as they're created, we would look at them. We don't have that language today. Um, so to not confuse the matter, I'll just leave it at. It, it's been a priority of the city for at least a couple of years. It's identified in the strategic plan and that's kind of the why is. Is periodically cities need to look at their map. They need to identify these islands and they need to be annexed into the city just as a matter of fairness and, and good. Um, good planning procedures and good policy. Um, so I'll leave my, my kind of narrative at that for, for the why we're looking to, to annex properties at this time. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Are there any clarifying questions that members of the council have for the applicant? And there's going to be broader than not the staff report anymore. This is the applicant. Um, I guess I just had one question. Do you remember? What year it was, um, the last time that the council did the island annexation process?
Two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, okay. Oh, sorry. Um, okay, any other clarifying questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to the public testimony part of the meeting. Um, as a reminder, please keep all comments to five minutes. Uh, and we'll begin with testimony in favor of the application. I don't have any. In person, I don't believe we have anyone online. Is that correct? Okay, well, that makes that easy. Then, um. We will now hear testimony opposed to the application. I have one person signed up, Charlotte Williams. Um, so if you'd like to come forward and, um, just please, again, introduce yourself, your name. Your city of residence, so we have you in the record. Um, and the council president will start your time whenever you start speaking.
I'm Charlotte Williams. Um, I live in Flemish. I was born and raised here. Uh, my property is six forty South nineteenth. My parents' property is seven hundred, but both of them have passed on. My mom, stepmom lives there. And then the third property at seven fourteen is property that I own with my brother. And, um, I'm here to talk to you about an island you had in here. Everything is an island. We are not. The city is not on all sides of us. You know, the definition of an island is surrounded completely by water. Water's not. It's part of this, but we are not completely surrounded by the city limits. So we shouldn't fall in to this. Annexation an island. My house is first, I'm only three sides. Um, to the city, then one in the middle is only two sides and the one on the end is three sides. So we don't fit into the criteria. Um, being completely surrounded and I went and read the staff report. There's a lot of fully surrounded by city lots, completely surrounded, um, completely surrounded properties. We're not completely surrounded. We don't take advantage of the benefits that. Have been, um, laid out. If we call the police department, they say you're in the county, we call county, they come and the Flemish police department comes right in after the county every single time. Fire is the same way. Uh, we don't use the parks. We don't use any of these gifts. That we've been told that we need to pay for. So it wouldn't matter. We'd be paying for other people and not for ourselves. We take care of our property, all three of them, make sure the lawns are mowed, taken care of. Clean the streets. I do it every year so that we don't have any flooding in the gutters because the county nor the city take care of that. I don't think that's gonna change if I'm annexed into the city. I'm still gonna be cleaning out those gutters every fall. With leaves and other things. So. Um, that's, that's my thing. We're not an island. None of us, those three properties, none of us are not an island. And so we don't fall into the criteria.
I guess that. Okay, well, thank you very much. There's no opportunity for people to ask clarifying questions of someone. May we? Okay, that wasn't in my script. Can you clarify which side you're saying isn't? Um, surrounded by the city, because you said on three sides and I'm trying to see which.
I switch to six forty. It's the first lot. Uh, I have a city on the left side. Um, I have an acre.
What do you mean by lots? Like noise?
From nineteen, we on nineteen.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, on the right, you know, the property that's not in the city. The same thing with the one in the middle, it's only. Uh, city only touches it on two sides and then the third lot, it only touches on three sides. So we are not completely surrounded. And you look at the staff report, that's in there a lot. And the definition of an island is completely surrounded and we're not.
So, I wanna make sure I'm getting my cardinal. So you're talking about, so it sounds like north and south are usually the problems, but east and west are. Because I'm looking at it on the map here.
If you look on page three of the staff report, Mayor, there's a map and you can be able to see six, seven and eight all.
Right. Yeah, but I just wanna make sure that's what you're talking about. So.
Yeah, well, these ladies talked about driving by and you can see that we're, that we're each almost an acre. So there's lines between us. But the city doesn't touch us in between those three.
Um, any other clarifying questions?
What you're saying is that there are three properties that aren't part of the city.
Right.
And if we look at the three as a unit, it is an island, but in between each one, there's no.
They're not even, each is own, I understand. Yeah, yeah, individually. So we're not a unit, just happens the same family lives in all three of them.
Right.
No.
Okay, um, well, thank you very much for your dis. Uh, I, well, sorry, is there any other questions for the? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um. Uh, is there any testimony from neutral parties? Okay, um, does the applicant wish to provide rebuttal to any of the public testimony given?
Yeah, I can address the issue with, um, the three individual tax lots on South Nineteenth Street. Our municipal code as well as the state code that we, that ours is patterned after. Uses a term that I did not use in my staff report. It uses the term territories. Um, and I'll just pull it really quick. It says, um, this is in. Um, Flemish municipal code, uh, sorry, let me find the number where Matt chapter wise. This is chapter. Eighteen point one thirty-five, point zero three zero under annexations. And if you go down to L, which specifically deals with island annexations. Um, I'll just read this quick because it'll read quicker and I can explain it. The following policies are adopted for island annexations. Number one, the city shall attempt not to create islands of unincorporated territory. Within the corporate limits of the city. If such an island is created, the city council may set a time for a public hearing for the purpose of determining if the annexation should be submitted to the voters. Um. The three, the three properties. Together make up a territory or an island that was created back in twenty eighteen. Um, I believe it was when the eighteenth street got. And what, what the future right away of eighteen street got annexed in with the Millpon Crossing subdivision. Is what triggered these, this territory to be created and it, and it created an island territory. So. Um, the property owner is correct, the, the staff report doesn't use that term territory. It more refers to the lots, kind of more generally speaking. Um, but our interpretation and our practice in dealing with island annexations. In the past has been if there's a grouping or a territory of properties that make up a territory. Then those are considered an island per our municipal code and by the state, and we have brought them through. Um, the island annexation process in the past and annexes into the city in the past as well. Um, so little confusion there. I could be more specific in the staff report about. The combination of those three properties being a territory and the territory is what is the island. Um, but it's a little semantics and, and just wanted to clarify that point.
Thank you. Um, does the council have any additional clarifying questions for staff? Um, and staff also includes Chelsea and Ashley, just as a reminder. Okay. Oh, please, no.
To clarify, um, so I heard that that, um, I might have missed it in the processing of this new information. Um, so the city has treated, um. Territories in this way. Did you say that this state also has, like, this is how it is in other areas of Oregon? So. State statute uses the same language. It, the same language from state statute was carried on into your local code. Um, as a lot of other land use related statutes, it is a little vague and there's room for local interpretation. So I would say it sounds like Flemish has a common practice in the past for the prior island annexation that you all did. I believe that there was a similar configuration of lots. Chris, let me know if that's incorrect. Uh, where you had multiple lots next to each other. You know, each of which were not entirely surrounded individually by land, by city limits, but that were. Collectively as a territory surrounded by city limits. So.
And it is, and it is the, um, that is correct and the. When the ballot titles are prepared, it'll be prepared by territory. In this case, again, it's unique in that all of these properties, with the exception of. The two industrial lots up off of North Eighteenth Street and then these three lots on South Nineteenth Street. All of the other territories are an individual tax lot as well. But the two industrial lots on North Eighteenth Street and these three on South Nineteenth Street. Will be combined into a territory. And so when they're presented to the voters, if the city council approves tonight. When we prepare this for the voters, the territory will be voted on. As in all three of these groupings of these three properties will vote on one. So it won't be the case where like. The property on the north is annexed and the one in the middle is not, and the one below is not. It'll be either all three of them get annexed as a territory. Or none of them, none of them will be annexed as a territory. Um, so that grouping will take place. When we present it to the voters, again, um, the staff report doesn't very clearly reflect that and I'll apologize for that. Um, just because the more common element here is that every single one of those other property. Individual tax lots is really its own territory.
But I guess what I would say to add to that is yes, uh, the statute is sufficiently broad that it's been read in both ways, right? There, more commonly nowadays, um, individual tax lots are the subject of island annexation and so territory applies to individual lots. But in the past, um, it has been more common to have larger territories that have become islands within cities. And that has been annexed as a territory. In other, in other cities, correct? Yeah, thank you.
In two thousand and eighteen, it was, I believe, all of Cooper Lane. And I think there's like ten or eleven properties on Cooper Lane. Those were all annexed as one territory. They all got annexed at the same time as one territory.
Thank you. Um, Councilor Irwin, did you have a question? Anyone else? Um, then does staff wish to respond to a question or issue raised by the testimony received? I think. We kind of did that just now, but any further responses from staff?
No.
Okay. Um, then, um, I guess. This, we did receive this legal description of properties. Um, if we consider this new documents or evidence, we could. Hold the record open, but if we consider it to just be sort of. Clarification of the existing documents or evidence, then, or no?
Correct, Mayor, but if I, if I, so it essentially what you're asking yourself is, th- these are new documents or evidence, but what you're asking is. Would someone, is this sufficiently new information where the public wouldn't sometimes review this? And it would affect maybe their testimony that they might provide on this application. If you feel that that is the case and that you would like to hold the record open to allow people to consider these legal descriptions. Choose to do that, uh, but you are not required to.
Okay, so does the council desire to hold the record open? Seven days allowing new documents to be addressed, um, or continue the hearing at a future date? Councilor Jordan?
So I suppose I would be open if, um, any of the, um. Property owners who are opposed to. The annexation, like if they wanted to bring other. Um, evidence forward, but if they don't want to, then I'm fine with moving forward.
And we, uh.
So just to, if I may, Mayor, um, just to comment on that, uh, what, what we would be recommending is simply holding the record open. To remove these legal descriptions and then to provide any additional testimony or arguments based on the legal description. So rather than any arguments or testimony, just because, you know, we've already had the planning commission hearing. And then this hearing, of course, you're always welcome to continue the hearing and allow more public process if that's something you're interested in. But if we were to do it just for this legal description, it would just to make arguments and evidence or arguments and testimony about the legal description.
And to be clear, these are the le- legal descriptions from Benton County for the addresses that are listed.
Changing.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Does, I, I'm not getting a strong sense that the council wishes to leave the record open on these legal descriptions. Okay. Um. Then, does the applicant waive their seven day period to submit a final written argument after the closing of the record?
We do, Your Honor.
Um, and we will move into council deliberations. So, um, we may deliberate the evidence. When you presented during the public hearing. Um, and you can also ask questions to staff. This is sort of more of a regular council meeting vibe. So. Um, so yeah, anyone have any thoughts on this?
Yes, my thoughts are that that doesn't change anything about what we're considering. So that's a non-issue for me and, um. I think it's a good idea to.
Any other deliberations? Councilor Jordan?
Um, to, I guess, to clarify. The, um, any annexed properties. The, uh, the taxes from them would be going towards. All of the things that we spoke about before, about all of these city services, that includes streets, correct? And.
I mean, the, the taxes would just go into the general fund and then the. City council would budget the general fund, so.
Yeah, I guess, um, like I, I, I sympathize with the idea of, you know. But we're not using these services, but, but in effect, everyone really is who lives. The urban project factory.
I mean, I think, you know, I, I also have a lot of thoughts on that too. I mean, like, you know, I've never had to call. Nine one one to have anyone come to my house, but I also know that property taxes for my property help. People patrol my area and make sure I don't have to call nine one one. Um, so, you know, I think people. Benefit from city services, whether or not they're actively gauging it though. But, um. I guess I'll say for my part, I, um. I'm comfortable with this, especially because it's going to the voters. I think I'm always happy to let the community make a decision. Um, I, I, I'm always happy to pass something along to them. I think, um, you know, that, I think I. From what I can see here, this meets the. Requirements, the conditions, um, in our development code and. And we are just making the quasi judicial decision tonight and the voters get to make the policy decision about if that's something they want their community or not. So that makes me feel pretty comfortable, too, that, you know, you don't we really don't have to take a stand one way or another tonight. This is just purely about, does it check the boxes? And I, I appreciate the concern about just sort of the way the staff report was written, where it used the word lots. I think I would have gotten confused by that, too. So that I might bring that up later just to make some I don't know if that's worth changing in the staff report, just amending that to read territories or reflects our code. I think that would be helpful, especially for the future. So anyone else can kind of envision that accurately? Any other deliberations?
I just support the concept she mentioned that we're all driving on the streets or we all walk on the streets or whichever. So we are still using things, even if we don't call the police or the fire. We're still using parts of what the city is providing.
Okay, any further deliberations? Okay. Then I just mentioned something about this, but is there a motion to amend any of the findings in the staff report? I would move that we change references to lots to be annexed, to territories to be annexed. Fair appropriate. Okay, so Councilor Andrade's hand first for a second. So it's been moved by Mayor McMurray and seconded by Councilor Andrade to amend the staff report to refer to territories instead of lots where that term would be applicable. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none at all.
Mayor McMurray, just to clarify, are, are you talking just within the findings that you're going to be adopting? Are you talking about going, I mean, the is the specific direction within the findings that you're going to be adopting that we want to make those clarifications? Because the, the staff report doesn't really get adopted by the city council. You're really just looking to approve the findings and then to make the decision. Are there specific instances in the findings where we didn't make changes?
Well, I guess what I would say, Chris, is the staff report, in my mind, I mean, you're correct. I think legally we are just adopting the, the, the findings, right? But the, the staff report supports those findings. And we still refer back to, at least when I'm reviewing a, a final decision, I look back at the staff report to understand it sufficiently. So I think if, if the mayor is looking for further clarity in a certain direction from this entire document, I think simply revising the staff report and or where lots are referenced in the findings would be okay.
I'm, I'm good with that. I'm looking specifically at finding number two, which seems to most clearly kind of maybe not be as an accurate reflection of what we're doing, because it says that each of them right, fit the definition of island property, which isn't really accurate, right? It really is an island territory as opposed to an island property. Although a property doesn't necessarily mean a tax lot, it could be, you know, property lose, used loosely could also be a territory. But I, I can do some cleanup on number two, finding number two. I don't know that if, if we want to wordsmith that now, so I'm very clear on what that needs to say before you adopt the findings. And then more generally, we can go on and make changes appropriate within the staff report, but it might be good to put Ashley on the spot and see if she could wordsmith number two to more accurately reflect the, the use of the term territories.
I believe it would be both number two, number three. And I'm just skipping the remaining ones. Number five. Yeah, number two, number three, and number five from a quick skim. And it would essentially be removing properties and instead replacing that term with territories in each location besides two, because it's 10 properties. So it would be all territories.
Say all 10 properties. Just say all territories fit the definition.
I mean, technically, I think it would be eight territories, but I think it would be, we don't need to specify the number. So.
Two would read all territories fit the definition of an island territory.
Correct.
And then number three would read no development is planned for any of the proposed territories at this time. And number five would read the city is able to provide water, wastewater, storm drain, park and street services upon annexation of the territory.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, would all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. That motion is adopted. Seven zero. Any further amendments to the findings in the staff report? Okay, is there a motion to adopt the findings in the staff report, including the revised language identified this evening? And approve the application? But that is where, if you are interested in doing so, I'm going to pass this down to you.
It's, it's essentially the same. I just added more so that directed to.
Actually, I still have to ask the question. Yes.
I move to adopt the findings of fact as presented in the staff report dated August 4th, 2025. For planning file PC.
Oh, wait, I'm out.
I apologize, but I apologize to interrupt, but just because we just amended the, the findings. So I would say the findings as amended by staff. I'm sorry.
Okay, I move to adopt the findings of fact as amended in the staff report dated August 4th, 2025 for planning file PC 25 dash zero three. Approve the application for annexation with the included condition of approval. And direct staff to draft and ordinance accomplishing the same, which will be presented to the council on.
How long do you need?
Do you think this September meeting? Chris, would you like that at the September meeting?
August 25th or September?
25th or September 8th.
Let's do September.
September 8th.
We should, we should consult real quick. I, I, I thought that the ordinance came after a vote of the people if the vote was in favor.
So there's a, we have to adopt this, the ordinance comes first. It's, it's how council either have an ordinance or a ordinance resolution or order, right? Those are the three options that a city can take. And in this particular case, state law requires you to take an action by ordinance or resolution. And your, your code requires it by ordinance. So you must take this formal action of making your quasi judicial decision here by ordinance. That ordinance is referred to the electorate. And then the electorate makes the final decision about the annexation.
October is fine. We've got, we've got some time, so.
September.
Bring that back to you, bring it back to you in October.
Once and for all.
Great. What's the meeting date in October?
Sorry, was that on October day?
Yes, October 13th, I think is. This is.
One more time with gusto?
Yeah.
So quick, I move to adopt the findings of fact as amended in the staff report dated August 1st, 2025 for planning file PC 25 dash zero three. Approve the application for annexation with the included condition of, of approval. And direct staff to draft and ordinance accomplishing the same, which will be presented to the council on October 13th, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
Wonderful. Is there a second on that motion?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Salsa and seconded by Councilor Crocker to do that. Is there, is there any discussion on that motion? I'll just say I appreciate all the work of our attorney and our city manager and our staff. I appreciate the testimony and the community members that joined us tonight, and I appreciate all of you for we do, this is my deliberation. Any further deliberation or discussion? Okay, then would all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is adopted, seven to zero. And we will look forward to reviewing the ordinance on October 13th. And any participant not satisfied with this decision may appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals within 21 days of the date of this decision. Does that mean from today or from October 13th?
It will be the fight, the actual date that we finalize the decision. So October 13th will be the lucky date.
Okay.
Then it'll be the second hearing.
So any applicant not satisfied with this decision may appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals within 21 days after we actually officially make the decision. Now you know. Okay, with that, we will close this piece of the agenda on the public hearing for PC 25 oh three annexations. And we will move on to our public comments. Is there any public comment?
Registered or?
Okay. Then we will move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda contains some minutes as well as a park advisory board vacancy and recruitment notice. Yes.
Can I just make a note, please? I just want to note that on the park advisory board recruitment notice, we did add Philometh News to that notice. Sorry for the omission, but I just want everyone to know that we did add that, we caught that and added that.
Although normally we don't accept discussion on the
I know.
I'll make an exception.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilor Andrade? Is there a second? I'll take Councilor Caseman on that one. It's been moved by Councilor Andrade, seconded by Councilor Caseman. Approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the consent agenda is approved. And that brings us to affordable housing project proposal with Commonwealth Development. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for being here. We can take a two minute recess here. Yeah, all right, we're going to take a, we'll take a three minute recess. Return at 8:05. Yes, thank you.
See, that's why we
It's good, it's good.
It is very effective.
Yeah, it is. The script. Like the discussion, like, you know, when am I supposed to be very straight laced and official versus supposed to like? Okay, good, okay, okay. Thank you. Oh, and then we will wait. Do they say it again on the record?
Not the video until.
Okay, so once again, we're calling the meeting back to order at 8:06 PM. And we're beginning the affordable housing project proposal with Commonwealth Development. So does staff want to introduce this or just turn it over?
I don't know if Chris has anything he would like to say. But if not, we're going to turn it over into your capable hands.
No, other than just what's in the staff report. So there isn't a gen item summary. Gave a little bit of background on the properties and kind of how we got to today, but I won't go into a lot of detail on that. Happy to turn it over for the presentation.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, then if you can just introduce yourself and get started.
Sure thing. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I'm Danny DeFrancesco with Commonwealth Development. And again, we're just here just to give an introduction of who we're, who we are, what we're doing, what we're potentially looking at doing at this site in the city of Philometh. And then, yeah, kind of go in there and see discussions. But again, just kind of want to give what we're thinking about for this site here in the city.
Perfect.
So just to give some background on Commonwealth Development, so we are a national affordable housing developer. Our home base is Madison, Wisconsin. We've been developing affordable housing since 2001, as all Commonwealth does. So we are active in over 15 states. We basically touched the borders nationwide here. You know, for Commonwealth, when we do our affordable housing development projects, we are long-term owner. And so what I mean by that is, you know, we don't develop and then sell in a few years. We really are developing to be a long-term partner and be within the community for a long time. And so, you know, we like to be strategic and, you know, working with local organizations and nonprofits, you know, within the community to help the folks for the residents that we're serving. We've been developing in Oregon since 2018, and so we've completed five projects a day with one pre-development. So we've developed projects in Newport, a project in Corvallis, which is 100 units. That was completed about a year and a half ago with a couple of other projects that were down in the Jackson County area to help rebuild the housing stock that was lost due to the wildfires that occurred in 2020. And so just for reference, the site that we are referring to that is owned by the city is roughly a half acre. There on, the address is technically 1917 Main Street, but it's, you can see there on the corner of North 20th and Philometh Boulevard. And so, you know, that's the site, you know, where we're looking to potentially do an affordable housing project. The thing that appeals to us on this Uh, the thing that appeals to us on this, and I guess I can back up too with Commonwealth, you know, we were founded on doing rural deals, um, so we've done deals that, you know, are as small as like twenty, twenty-four units to deals as big as like two hundred units, so you know, it really, I think a good thing for us is if we see a site that, you know, we like and where we think, you know, we need for affordable housing, you know, we can develop on as small as a half acre such as this or ten acres, um, and so, you know, we're, we have an in-house architect team that can really, you know, help us in, you know, making sure that it fits, you know, within the site and uh, making sure that it's a, a good development for all. And so this is just a concept plan, um, and again, just, you know, wanna kind of show a layout of what we're potentially looking at doing, so uh, what we're looking at doing is a four-story mid-rise building that would be comprised of thirty-three units, uh, roughly twenty-six one bedrooms and seven two bedrooms with then surface stalls, um, on the back half of the property, so you're really gonna have the building there on the front edge of Philomath Boulevard, and so this should be a four-story mid-rise building, throw that back. More for my shin there. So it's gonna be a four-story, uh, building which would then, again, we would have, uh, onsite property management, we would have a maintenance worker, um, and then we would have a community room where residents would be able to gather free of charge, um, being a communal space, and then also a fitness, fitness center, business center, um, you know, and just those are kind of the amenities that we'd have for this site, um, we would have, uh, all surface stalls parking there. Um, and so, you know, that's kind of what we're looking at, um, you know, thus far, and again, this is just a concept plan, um, obviously nothing set in stone, uh, we would obviously follow everything within the zoning code, um, you know, that we're developing in. Uh, just to kind of give you some ideas of, you know, the finishes of what we're doing, um, I know some folks here were, or all of us were able to tour fifty-third flats, which is a project in Corvallis that Commonwealth completed a year and a half ago, and again, that's roughly like three miles from this site, and uh, you know, typically what you're, or not typically, what we always have is, you know, in-unit washer and dryers, uh, central HVAC, um, energy efficient appliances, uh, low E value windows. So when we apply to the state agency for funding, there's typically some guidelines to where you're making your, the shell of your building and your building as efficient as possible, so there are certain guidelines that, um, you know, you're meeting when you're developing these projects, um, and then as I mentioned, you know, we're we try to fit as many site amenities that we think would be beneficial to the residents that will be living there. Um, and you know, even though it's a affordable housing project, you know, we really still develop and make it look and feel as if it's a market rate project, and you wouldn't know the difference between affordable or market rate. Um, so this is a project that was just completed, uh, two months ago in, uh, Phoenix, Oregon, so just south of Metford. So this was a seventy-two unit building, uh, where you can see there's a one-story clubhouse as you enter, and then, uh, these were three-story, um, walk-up style buildings, so again, you can see here, you know, when you have a bigger site, you know, you have more room to play with, uh, you can go with different design styles, and so uh, the benefit or cool thing about this project is you can see is we did solar on this project, so this was one of Commonwealth's first true solar projects where the property is paying for all the utility bills. Um, and so we're gonna see how that works, but definitely excited and able to do that, and our projections are to have seventy-five to eighty percent of the energy be offset, uh, with these, uh, solar installations. Um, this is an, another project that's in Talent, Oregon, so just a little further south of Phoenix, um, again, it's a seventy-two unit apartment project, um, you know, we tried to keep these mature trees where we could, which I think was really cool, um, you know, and then you know, for, um, another example here is like we have community garden beds, um, just kind of sprinkled throughout the property, and then there's a playground tucked back here, um, onsite maintenance shed, so again, you know, depending on the size and whatnot, you know, you try to fit as many amenities and it was just there the other, or last weekend, like those community garden beds, they actually really get used, so you know, if there's opportunities where it presents itself, you know, you, you know, try to add those features in. Um, so this is an example of a mid-rise building. Um, so again, this is one building, this is a little bit different than probably what we'd be proposing where there's a po, what they call podium, where there's some commercial on this first floor, actually, take that back, not commercial, it's all parking on this first level, and then apartments above. Um, again, you know, the design style is due to kind of the city and what they want to see in that area, so again, we would hailer the design to match that of, you know, the character of the city of Philomath. Uh, this is another example of a mid-rise river flats, um, so in Wisconsin, so again, just another example, this one was on actually a city-owned, um, or a couple of the parcels were city-owned, and we combined a couple parcels to then, um, build this, a lot that's right downtown, so it's a good example of, you know, showing that public and private partnership, um, to get, this one was like ninety-seven units, um, of affordable housing. And then again, just wanted to kind of just give some photos just to kind of show again what a community room would look like, so this is a community room where, you know, again, residents can gather, hang out, uh, they want to rent the, the room they can free of charge if it's someone's birthday or, or whatever they want to celebrate for. Um, you know, so again, this is a, a nice space that we feel that residents, um, can really utilize. Um, we also could potentially look at, if we work with certain organizations, they would be able to you know, use the space to have a class or something if residents, um, you know, were, were to you know, be a part of that organization, um, where you could do like financial education or, um, you know, gardening education, just like random just utilize the space, you know, for whatever the residents you think is a benefit for. Uh, this is just an example of an in-unit feature, um, again, you're, you're really just trying to again, just develop kind of what's in the market today, so, um, you know, your standard, you know, L V P throughout, uh, you know, nice cabinets, countertops, uh, you know, walk-in closets in the master bath, um, where you have it. And so this would be, uh, the proposed unit count, and so as I mentioned, uh, we would currently be looking at thirty-three units, and so when I say affordable housing, I'm referring to where all the units will be at or below sixty percent of the area median income. And so for an example, if, uh, for a one-person household that were to be, um, at the sixty percent A M I rent, uh, they would have to make forty-nine thousand five hundred or less in order to qualify for that unit. If it was a two-person household, it would go to fifty-six thousand five eighty, and then a three-person household would be sixty-three thousand six sixty. Um, and then theoretically a two-bedroom or a two-bedroom could house four persons, then it would, you know, increase from there. Um, the rents, uh, again, those are established by HUD, and so those come out every April, um, typically, uh, what those new proposed rents are for Benton County. And so for twenty-twenty-five rents for a one-bedroom, uh, your low end of the proposed rent would be six sixty-three to one thousand two sixty for the sixty percent unit, and again, those get established by HUD each year, and so those are the guidelines that our management company would follow when implementing the rents. Um, that rent does also include the utility allowance, so for example, the twelve sixty for sixty percent on one bath, that's the utility allowance, I think, which can be either used by an energy consultant that proves out your model of energy consumption or like the housing authority, you know, that rent would be, the, the net rent would be potentially like eleven sixty if it is a hundred dollar utility allowance, um, so this is like the all-in. And then just to kind of give you an idea of what, kind of how the capital stack works, um, on these light tech projects, so we will be applying and we have applied to O H C S, which is the state agency, Oregon Housing and Community Services, and so they are the ones that administer the tax credits as well as what you see there, the lift funds, um, local innovation fast-track funds, and so the state of Oregon has really, you know, stepped up in, you know, recognizing the affordable housing shortage, not only in the state of Oregon, but, you know, nationwide that everyone's seen. And so they've put significant resources in helping, you know, get more unit, affordable units throughout the state of Oregon, um, with those lift funds, and then, you know, with these tax credits that get administered, and so um, you can see here, you know, the, the bulk of your funding is really coming from the tax credits and the lift funds, um, and then your traditional first mortgage and then deferred developer fee. Um, on this pro, or on this proposal here, I'm showing, you know, land for one dollar. Um, again, to really make these deals go, having some type of city contribution goes a long way. Um, one was helping make these deals feasible, um, as I'm sure you all know, construction costs have not gotten cheaper. Um, and so, you know, that's just a, a way to make these deals feasible. Um, so we have a a local G C or G C out of Ashland that has done our last few projects, and so uh, we have a great working relationship with them, so, you know, we've already kind of having these conversations of, you know, construction cost and, you know, how a deal can look. Um, and then, um, as I mentioned, the, uh, property management is also, uh, they're based out of Oregon, and so they manage all our Oregon properties, and so I think that's a key thing, uh, from the standpoint of you have continuity with management, um, and you already have that established partnership, and, uh, with the project in Corvallis, you know, just up the road, um, I think there's gonna be a lot of synergy there, um, and you know, use those resources that we already have established, um, and, you know, they've been a great partner to work with, so we really have the the partners in place to, um, you know, have a successful project here. And so with that, this is a sense of a, of a timeline, so to try to stay as high level as I can, the state agency, they rolled out a new program last year, and effectively it's, they've opened up their portal and you submit, and basically when funds are available, you try to get in line, um, and so the, the budget just got approved, uh, I believe last month for the funds to come on for this year and then into next year, so it's really kind of applicants are trying to find projects and get them submitted and then get them approved, so again, I have a TV, uh, to be determined here on the reservation because right now there is funds available, but the application probably won't get approved until September, October, and so that's not gonna, we won't know if funds get fully allocated, and if that is the case, then we would basically be wait-listed until funds become available. So in this scenario, if we're just you know, best-case scenario, if we were to get awarded September, October, and funds were available, then we would basically be looking to submit to the city, um, for plan review and a type-three review. I believe it's type-three, I don't think it's type-two, um, but either way, into the city five months from the O H C S award date, so what that does is if you get an award, you hire your survey, your civil, your design, and that's where they really, you know, kind of get into the nuts and bolts of, you know, you know, making sure everything works, we work with Public Works Department to make sure, um, and we've already confirmed with them, you know, the utilities are available on Nineteenth Street. Um, you know, just making sure that all the pieces are fitted in that puzzle, and then that also is when we go out, um, and get the tax credits and stuff like that with the federal investor, um, as well as finding your, uh, debt provider, so, you know, typically it's five months from the award date, we can work quicker, um, but five months is a conservative number in my opinion, and then in speaking with Chris, um, another good thing that, you know, I I like about the city of Philomath is, um, you know, with working in these smaller municipalities, the turnaround time on reviewing permits, um, if you work in bigger municipalities, it could be you're going ten rounds, and it could take a year, a year and a half to get, you know, from when you submit your initial permit set to when you actually get approved. Um, I think, you know, city of Philomath probably has a better process than most, so, um, you know, that's where, you know, we're able to probably get shovels in the ground sooner than later. Um, and then we have roughly a fourteen-month constru, construction schedule, um, from when we break ground, so again, if you're playing this scenario out, we'd look to have construction completed in summer of two thousand and twenty-seven. Um, and then yes, starting to be able to house residents, uh, that summer. That's it, so kind of just wanna, again, just open up for, for questions, uh, and yeah, just, is there any little counter questions you might have?
Perfect, thank you very much, any questions from the council? Um, Council Salsa?
Um, I'll just get this one out of the way really quick, um, my, it's a full disclosure, um, my, um, previous life, I was the deputy fire chief and the fire marshal here in town, so this will be a four-story building. My highest recommendation is that you start including the fire chief in these conversations because this is gonna have to be dealt with in a completely different manner, because we have a three-story truck, right, and now you got four stories, so now that just kind of changes that sort of landscape. Um, I think this, I think this is extraordinary, I think it's exactly what we need in our town, it's just, it's very exciting. And I want to make sure that there's just no, you get all the way down the track and the fire department goes, whoa, 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 timeout, you know what I mean? It's a, it's, so, anyway.
No, and I appreciate that, so I didn't want to get, don't want to get the cart before the horse necessarily, so if we were to move forward, um, yeah, the fire marshal is on there, is at your door, you know, well, they had her seen, you know, how so, yeah, so, yeah, we, we definitely will, will contact them, um, with that, and then with that proposal, I should also add, um, it will have an elevator, um, with it, so, um, but yeah, still need to address that other concern, so appreciate that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Council Carter?
I have two questions, of course, um, I saw that the parking was in the back and the building is in the front where it's much more noisy by the highway, is there any way to switch it so it's quieter for the residences? Or is there, I mean, is there a specific reason that it has to be that way?
Um, I mean, we certainly could look at that way, so I think we were trying to be more conscious of the neighbors to the north with the one-story. And so we were thinking of kind of having more activity on the front, um, than in the back, uh, that's kind of, I think, where the thought was, so I, again, we're not set in stone to it, so um, we could look at flipping it if that's
Just, just my thought that it would be a lot quieter for the residents as if they weren't right on the highway.
Sure.
Um, other question, does the manager live on-site or what, what does that work?
No, uh, we will not have a, a manager unit on-site, um, so we won't.
Council Nielsen?
Um, one of your slides listed, um, the one-bed and one-bath number of units, and then you listed twenty-six one bedroom, one bath, seven two-bedroom, one bath, and then you listed thirty, fifty, sixty percent of the, how are those divisions segmented, for instance, out of the twenty-six units, how many of them are rented at the thirty, how many of them are rented at the fifty, and how many are rented at the sixty? So that we know, for me personally, I wanna, I would like to know, are we renting only to the twelve hundred, you know, the sixty, which makes it a twelve hundred a month apartment, which is different than what I was thinking some of our, our needs are within our community, how do you divide up how many occupants, does that make sense, how many will be at, at both on the two-bedroom and the one-bedroom, to see how that works?
So, again, nothing's set in stone right now, and so then I get too technical, so when we apply for the little funds, O H C S has a, a matrix that says if you have a one-bedroom thirty percent, you can, it's a certain amount of lift funds that they will provide for that unit, and then it, you receive less lift funds if you have, uh, more sixty percent, so if you have more thirties, you receive more lift funds and then less with the sixties. But the other key is too, is the and the reason where it might, I don't think it's, I think it's a good amount of density, we try to get as much as we could because when you have these smaller projects, it, your operations get a lot tighter because you don't have as many units to help spread those costs around. So it's a numbers game from the standpoint of needing to have more sixties to be able to cover those expenses, so in the scenario that I was showing, there was three thirty percent units that were one bedrooms, three, uh, fifty percents that were one bedrooms, and then there was a couple that were, there was probably one or two that were a thirty percent, and then one or two that was a fifty, and then the rest would all be sixties.
If I can, if I can add to that as well, another reason why, um, having your affordable housing predominantly, um, or your development of predominantly affordable housing is it can be, uh, useful for prevailing wage concerns, which I'm sure has been a consideration for, uh, the, uh, design thus far, so So, uh, if a de- design is, uh, predominantly affordable housing, then it's kind of a different risk analysis and assessment for a developer as well. So predominant is, um, I believe si- uh, fifty percent or, yeah, I believe it's sixty percent or more. So if, uh, the development is sixty percent or more of the, um, the. Higher, the, is it?
Yeah, sixty percent A M I.
Correct.
Yep.
Then, then, um, it qualifies as affordable housing under state law.
Did that answer your?
It did. It just. I'm trying to, am I doing math here? You're talking two thirds of the properties would be at, uh, sixty percent.
Approximately.
Wow, that doesn't seem like low housing to me. I'm sorry, but for me, that that's. I mean, yes, it is low income housing, but when only a third of it is really. I guess sixty percent is still, I don't know. I just struggle with that piece.
Forty percent lower than.
Yeah, I know. No, it's still.
It's. It's the, again, like if you could put a hundred units on there, you could have forty percent of them, you know. And again, it all depends where you're developing in the county and rent limits. It's just. It it's a little bit more difficult when you're doing a mid-rise because there is more common area space. So there's more square footage. So your. Cost per square foot, it just, it makes it a little bit harder. Um, you know, whereas the project in Corvallis. Is a way more efficient build because again, you're just having really the units and then just the staircase. So when you, you have to find a way to make up for that. Common space because it has to get paid somehow. So again, that's kind of where. You have to have a deal feasible and be able to, you know, cover those expenses and the cost. So it is, you know, a balancing act of trying to be able to, you know, be able to serve those thirties and fifties. Uh, while also still be obviously be able to have a project that's feasible.
You talked about the lift funds. So does that make it so it really doesn't matter to you? I mean, are the lift funds equal to the difference between the thirty percent and the sixty percent or not?
No, because so. If you do, if you, for example, if you do all thirty percent units. The lift funds don't make up for the loss in rent, um, that you would be getting on the sixty percent. So. The numbers just wouldn't work.
Any more questions or discussion? I'll say I'd, I'd like having parking in the rear. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think just because I think. It helps alleviate concerns from the rear. Imagine, you know, living at your house and then having a four story.
There's a big church that really.
Yeah, it's just houses. Can you pull up the slide? Yeah, it's the block. Yeah, I mean, our development. You get further into downtown fires that buildings have to be at street levels that have set back. Not, I don't think it applies to this part of town, but.
Okay.
It is sort of our general.
Single family homes here.
Yeah. So church is up the next block.
Okay. But it's not, but it's a block.
Can you go back to the one where you talk about the financing and the, there was like you had that. This twelve million or whatever that was. So you're talking about a mortgage that on this property of. One, six, one, seven?
Yep.
Out of a, almost thirteen thousand, uh, thirteen million dollar property. So your mortgage isn't very high, uh, on a.
And that's because, again, you're not getting enough rent with the operation side of it.
Okay.
So the operations for a thirty three unit, there's some fixed cost, no matter. No matter what it is. So, you know, for example, say if you're doing maintenance and a maintenance contract's ten thousand, but you can only spread that over. Thirty three units, whereas maintenance contracts, ten thousand, hundred units. It just makes, yeah, again, it just makes the deal a little bit tighter. And so again, that's where, you know, we do have. Data where when we're looking at these deals, we go to our management team to say, hey, like. Hold up your comps up to see how this deal projects in your portfolio. So we have an accurate picture of. How this property is going to run from an operational standpoint.
I think just from the constituents I talked to, if we talk about a low income housing unit and I tell them, well, the rent's gonna. Two thirds of the rent's gonna run either between twelve hundred, almost, so fifteen hundred a month. They're gonna say, Teresa, is that really a low income housing? So that's a piece that I'm I'm stumbling on. Because I think for some individuals. That would not be considered low income housing. In Philomath as well, maybe in Portland, it's different, maybe other places. But for, I mean, is that, am I wrong?
You're not, no. I think my response to that would just be right now it's an empty field. So there's no one able to be housed there. And.
And there are some six hundred.
Right, yeah, I get it just.
People that are the biggest.
Right. I mean, I I agree with you. I think in my perfect world, they would all be six hundred dollar. I would rather have. A third of them be that than what we currently have, which is. Grass.
Is, just so I can cut, so. My third is in the thirty to fifty or my third is just thirty?
Third.
The third of the, the apartments when you.
I mean, out of the thirty three units, like it's gonna be like. If it's the three to four for thirties, you're gonna have three and four for the fifties. So they're the same. And again, like, you know, we. Again, you can kind of play with the numbers, um, and see, you know, if you can do some forties, but take away the sixties, but then it just makes. Deal. I mean, again, and I have these funds because this is, you know, how we typically have done these deals. That's not to say. Um, you know, again. With everything that's kind of transpired these past few months, you know, HUD and other funding programs are getting slashed, but. We apply to, you know, Epic Federal Home Loan Bank Affordable Housing Program. We look for home funds, housing trust funds. So like. We do and, you know, Benton County has anything. So we do try to find ways to get additional funding and then. And I say that because if you can, then right, that's where you have a little bit more breathing room to maybe be able to modify the unit mix.
Yes.
I can add another comment. Uh, I would just say it seems like tonight it's just an introductory. So in my, from my perspective, and again, I'm not the the final decision maker by any means, but. You know, I think that this will be a negotiation, you know, um, many of these aspects. I mean, ideally, you know, it has to be feasible for the developer, right? It has to be financially feasible. But if there is any room in these numbers and, you know, as the staff report. Recommends, if we have subsequent executive sessions to discuss, maybe important negotiation points. For this development room, um, we can identify those further and discuss those further.
Thank you.
Or could I make a comment?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we have developed in Corvallis and in other areas in Oregon, and I do know like S D C fees. Are a big hit, um, to affordable housing developments because. I have seen certain municipalities potentially waiver to like fifty percent reductions. And so if. There's opportunities for that, but again, that's for the city to weigh. You know, if there's relief there, that's how you can help. You know, be us be able to maybe provide more lower income.
And and that's another thing we could discuss. Is as an aspect of the negotiation, right?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I was just gonna say, I really love this and that, like, you know, whatever the numbers end up being. I'm sure I'll be in support of it. I, um, the. I guess to the point about, you know, the. The allocation of what the rental rates would be. This economy, like honestly, I think anything helps, like, uh, there was saying of like, oh. No one, there's no way to live there currently. Um, but so there's that. And then also to the point of. Potential wiggle room. Um, I know a lot of people, um, really want. At least one parking spot per, um, race. And also that is a place where we could potentially add more units because there are no. Parking requirements for affordable housing, um, for the state. And so.
Or anywhere.
Yeah, yeah. So as a reminder, like, I know, like, that. To counsel's point, there are places that we can.
Yep. I guess. Just to clarify though, the. The agreement that we would be executing. Potentially with Commonwealth would be a sale of property. Um, so. Yes.
It would most likely be a dislocation in development agreement, a D D A, which is. Sale, but it's also, uh, efficient, uh, shoot essentially.
We wouldn't close until we have all our funding lined up. So. Basically on the land financial closing. So we would in in the sale or purchase agreement or development agreement, basically lay out that. Our closing date would be May twenty sixth, maybe we want. Judges to give us some permission. So again, that's still in the curve until we have. Everything lined up.
But we would use this time to negotiate the terms, you know, ideally, you know, not this whole time necessarily, but sometime.
Yeah, actually, I will say that is site control is a piece to O H C S. So they want to see. Site control.
Yeah.
In place and not a, yeah, we like the idea of it. So. We already submitted the application. So I mean, that's gonna be their first comment back to us is we need to see like an executed purpose agreement. So. Again, um, I'm not putting, I say that because. If if it happens in October, it just means. We would have to just wait longer upon the May round then.
Well, and another way you can address that, that I've seen on prior projects is an exclusive, an exclusivity agreement, right?
Sure.
So that can essentially be an a- an agreement where you agree that you'll be negotiating, an agreement to agree, basically. Yeah, that's so instead of yes. Don't study this could help her. A sale in the future at some future watching.
This, um. I talked about September, October, having the reservation. So when, how long is it gonna take us to have our meeting and make some sort of decision?
Well, so I I would just refer back to. Yeah, that will the staff report and everything here. Like, all we're doing tonight is like, do we want to move ahead? Uh, and then if we want to move ahead with it. Um, you know, I think we can take note of some of the conversation tonight and everything. And then that would be scheduled for. Um, we, as the city attorney mentioned, you know, we could do an executive session to discuss. Um, real estate transactions, um, can have staff meet with Commonwealth, but. That would all be, you know, the next, yeah, month or so probably. So.
But this timeline then isn't very realistic.
I mean, it's up. That would be September.
It would potentially be again, this this month at our second meeting.
Now, big discussion.
When you submit to O H C S, they give themselves thirty days to move. So we submitted the first of August. So we would hear back from them early September. And then if we would have that site controller or whatever else they might have comments on, we have fifteen days to respond. We would respond within like two days. They can then get back in the timestamp and then they take ten to fifteen days to respond to that. So ideally, our project would be. Approved. Again, best case scenario, like mid-September, but then you just don't know where you fall in line. Of like if we're number two on the waiting list for funds or if they have funds, you get awarded or you're twenty seven. The.
Well, I was just going to kind of add that I think what's important to note is that there is a timeline on this. So if this is something that you're interested in doing, we will want to try to get back and have these meetings to. There's no guarantee where we'll end up, but we want to try to get those meetings scheduled to have those negotiations so that we can try. To be within this timeline or as close as we can. Um, so that's, I think you're hearing that already, but it's a a timing. Game, so to speak, and.
That kind of sound pushy. It's just.
No. Yeah.
How the agency now handles their allocations.
Yeah, I, just give me one second. Um, I think. What I've been hearing tonight is a lot of sort of questions about details, about sort of ratios, about, you know, design. I've not heard anyone be opposed to the project, which I think is what we needed tonight. So. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that, right? It seems like everyone is supportive of moving ahead with this project. Pending details, but those details are things we can work out. So, okay, cool. Counselor Andrade?
That wasn't getting my comment enough. Like, you don't need a motion, right? We can just tell you that we're comfortable with it.
No, I think we will just proceed with, um, talking about timing to see. When a meeting would be appropriate, um, and then we'll reach out to you all about that.
And thank you. Your slides were very informative and helpful. So thank you for that. Good job on this.
And our tour was good.
Yes.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
And that you're even doing this.
Most proponent of being able to see and think there's.
Yeah, yeah.
If you saw my photos, I could have.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Motion.
You're welcome to make one, but I don't think we strictly need one. I think.
We can either have a motion if you would like, or we can just have general consent.
Make it formal. You can go ahead and make it formal. Or if you're, if you're, if you, if you think this general consensus is acceptable.
General consensus is acceptable. Thank you. I try. Um, okay, so we will have staff move forward with the partnership with Commonwealth. Um, and get back to us with needed next steps in the next month or so.
That was Dave Francisco, is that correct?
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you again.
Anything else for us or?
No, I think, uh, I'll just work with, uh, Chris and Chelsea on the great next steps and then I. Yeah, that's August twenty eighth or whoever.
And we'll re- we'll reach out soon.
I think the last thing I want to say before we move on from this, which I am just amazed with. Is the council put this, developing this property into affordable housing. On our strategic plan priorities for the year, which went into effect July first. It's now August eleven. And we already have a developer here with a conceptual project for this lot. So it's been like less than a month and a half. I'm sure. And I want to give a lot of credit and thanks to Counselor Andrade and City Manager Workman. Sort of made these connections happen and have been meeting with Commonwealth and, um, kind of getting these balls rolling. So. Thank you to you both and thank you for being here and helping us out. Yeah, we'll be in touch.
Right.
Thank you. Cause she loves Mickey Mouse. All right. Um, thank you again for being here. And then. Next item on our agenda is, um, discussion of, uh, potentially having an additional representative role. With the Benton County Historical Society. So as a refresher, and it's outlined in the staff report, um, when we. Made these appointments in January, um, two other organizations were brought up. So the, you know, we all have our liaison or representative roles. Um, during that meeting, it was brought up to potentially add a representative to the library system and to the historical society. Chris and I have been working on that and the library has not. We haven't gotten sort of a firm idea of what that would look like yet, but the historical society, um, seemed. Very into the idea and enthusiastic about having someone there. So, uh, we'll come back and talk more about the library in the future. Um, but for the historical society, um, I think that's where we've just won some decision. From the council tonight. Um, if we, it sounds like they're open to it. We expressed interest earlier this year. I imagine we should just go ahead and do it. Um, oh, yes, oh. they're open to it. We expressed interest earlier this year. I imagine we should just go ahead and do it. Um, oh, yes, oh, oh, please, sorry, Chris, hey. Yes.
I don't know for how long.
Oh, you're fine. I just barely raised it. I just want to clarify with the um with the library, they're very open to the idea and concept, but they've got some very specific bylaws between their agreement between Corvallis and Benton County that are very scripted on who makes up their advisory board, if you will, or their their liaison positions from Corvallis and Benton County and then broader Benton County at large. So we're looking into that. So it's just gonna take a little bit more time. So they're willing, the the reason we're not considering library now, just because there's some very specific language we're dealing with, how to make that happen, but they're very much in favor of doing it. Um, but we figured we could at least get the museum done. They were again, also very open to the idea and excited about the opportunity. So um, yeah, if we can address this one tonight, and then I foresee we'll be looking at adding a liaison position for the library in the very short term, within the next few months.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, Counselor Crocker.
My only concern is does anybody have time? Because I feel like times are, you have time.
I can do it. I I doubt they would meet super frequently. There's no information on here about how frequently or or what, but I've been hanging out with the uh museum folks recently, so it, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, okay. Well, I was gonna say, I kind of. Okay, well, in that case, then I'll move to establish uh okay, that I moved to establish a new representative role to serve as liaison to the Benton County Historical Society and appoint Counselor Andrade to serve in this capacity. Wonderful. Um, any discussion, Counselor Andrade? Okay. Okay, then would all those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand and say aye, aye? All right, congratulations, Counselor Andrade. And thanks to the historical society who read up to that. We'll look forward to your report. Then our last item of um official real business here, we have Resolution twenty five nineteen applying for a sixty thousand dollar housing planning grant. Uh, you have your staff report or your agenda item summary there. Uh, Chris, did you want to give any highlights of this?
Um, just the timing of it. Ideally, we would have had this last month or a couple of months ago. Um, they're good with getting the resolution after we've applied, because I did apply for it already. Um, but they do want the resolution from the city council that you're in favor of it, and you're good with receiving these funds if they're awarded to us. At some point in the future, they just need it before they're awarded, which I think is in like October-ish. Um, so anyway, well, Oregon Caskett West Council Government, shout out to them, they've been great. Um, we actually utilized their grant writing services uh that they didn't charge us anything for, which was very nice of them, uh, as we're a member organization of that body. And um, we'll probably look to use them to fulfill um or to spend this grant money, which will be nice to get uh their experience and professionalism and their uh knowledge of the new housing rules they're getting handed down. Uh, they're just familiar with them, they're on top of them, they're working with other communities. Um, so they're in a good position to be able to help with the those housing policies and development code changes, so. Um, yeah, I think that sums it up.
Awesome. Thank you. I will say their generosity in um filling out the grant application seems a lot less altruistic when you realize they're getting the grant money, but but no, that's wonderful. They're good at both things.
Make a motion.
I guess.
I move to approve Resolution twenty five nineteen of City to apply for a sixty thousand dollar housing planning grant in Department of Land Congratulations and Development.
Wonderful. Is there a second on that motion? Seconded by Counselor Andrade. Um, so moved by Counselor Nielsen, seconded by Counselor Andrade to approve Resolution twenty five nineteen. Um, is there any discussion on that motion, uh, Counselor?
Just to ask the question, is there anything weird about applying for it and then passing a resolution to apply for it? I don't personally, I don't care, like my personal capacity, but is that weird or?
I think applying and raising and receiving funds, I think it's more that you're saying we can receive the funds if.
Okay, so. Oh, that makes sense, yeah.
Had already received the funds and retroactively approving those funds that you've received, but in this case, it sounds like Chris simply proactively applied and that is seeking confirmation that that was. Yeah, no, it's so good. Still up, yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, it's more like, you know, you ask your friend if you can have a sleep or call your mom and mom's like, yeah, it's fine. I think that's kind of what we're doing.
Like, oh, girl.
Chris, I want that word in the, I want, yeah. Okay, all right. Okay, there's a motion and um second, I was just curious, am I the the title of the resolution? Should that say MAP?
Yes, MAP.
It says zoning MAP.
Yeah, we will. And we will add a P.
Okay, all right.
I do not think that that needs to be noted.
Okay, I just wanted to, maybe I was like, well, at first I was like, what is zone MA? Like, is that a type of zone classification we have? Um, okay, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, um, seeing one, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, Resolution twenty five dash nineteen is adopted seven to zero. Um, that brings us to our reports. Um, the only sort of official report that we have is um we need to decide if we want a um city council chili cook-off team. I I feel like I'm in Parks and Rec sometimes. I think we need the crystal cam.
Yeah, we definitely need it.
Yeah, yeah, it's commentators. Crystal does like facial commentary. Sorry, okay, we're we're doing.
Buy for the.
So the chili cook-off is on September seventh. And um, I don't know if the council has officially had a team.
This started several years ago when the council felt left out. Uh, not this current council, but felt left out because everyone would talk about the chili um feed and how great it was and that they all had these teams. So asked if the next year they could have a team. That team did not come to fruition. Um, so I believe this is the, I believe this is the second year that we are out there. Crystal has, I did it last time, buy for a spot, you have to wait for the email. Crystal took over and did that this year, so I passed the torch. Um, so we're just simply trying to determine if there are enough of you who would be able, willing and able to step up for a team. Um, if not, they usually are more than happy to have their spot back to give, you know, a lot of people want to be there. Um, so we just want to make the option available.
Um, so I'll just say from me, I will be at the event, but I'll be gone like the Friday and Saturday beforehand, so I don't know how useful I'll be to, you know.
Oh, he's a judge.
Oh, okay. So I'm having to like serve the chili, but I I don't think I'll be.
Yeah, my understanding is there are very strict rules about what you can and cannot do ahead of time. And I believe um Chris could probably speak to this, he's been on team, but I believe that you um are required to cook it on site. So that's part of it is that you're getting there early to have a team who's prepping all the chili, making the chili. And you also have to have people to stay throughout the day when it's open to the public to serve the chili and win all of the awards. Um, it would be noticed, it's making potential. Yes.
Just add it, I'll just add it is an all-day event. I mean, it's, you do have to get there pretty early. I mean, not super early. Eight, nine o'clock. And it's, it, you're tired by the end of the day. It's a full day. I've worked with the frolic and radio team several years now, and it's a full day. It's fun, but it's a lot of work. Um, so not to dissuade one or another, I mean, happy to support the council if they'd like to have a team, but um, there is something nice about showing up to vent and eating chili and not having to sweat all day long and cooking your own pot of chili.
Think you took the words right out of our. But um, I'm, I am seeing some shaking of heads. Is there anyone that is really excited about?
A lot of good moments from this.
All right, well, um, then it sounds like we will probably not be having a team for this year. Yes.
It wasn't quite the hell though.
Yeah, yeah. I will say if I would be interested in future, I just, it's already gonna be, I think I'm coming back like Sunday morning, so I don't think that's a good idea.
I was hopeful that there would be people that really wanted to do it so that I could. Hey, I don't think I have a particularly competitive recipe. I don't have the bandwidth to lead it, but somebody was like, hell, yeah, I got my secret grandmas.
That's why it's so good.
You've seen the.
Yes, yeah.
Just, just to kind of close this out, because it does take quite a bit of effort to make sure you're still on the list, get the email for your buying for the spots and getting the good spots and Crystal knows, um, and I did. Um, I think that unless we hear from the council, and I can't remember, I think it's when, was it May? It's May that you get the emails, so you really would need to, if you, someone here has a, just really wants to do it next year by April, please let us know.
Add that to the.
Yeah, we can have a conversation about it like early on, just get it out.
I'll see, we'll have time in the future, but when we're faced with.
Do you want to cook chili? Okay, so it sounds like no chili team, but I hope we will all attend, attend and not discuss any city business, but eat chili. Okay, then um are there any other council reports from our representative and liaison roles? Anything anyone wants to report back? Counselor Crocker?
Uh, PCS had their fundraiser last weekend, was very successful from my perspective. I haven't seen numbers yet, but it was well-planned, it was, it ran very. It was announced that it would probably be the first annual, so that they'll plan it it again in the future.
Can also say something about the police committee in as much as that we had the conversation.
Oh, good, yeah. Okay.
Comment, so it's still in committee.
Okay. Um, should we anticipate that?
Some other things, I mean, a lot of it's gonna be a bit more citizen engagement.
Okay.
Folks that want to do. Like towns and things like that in terms of pedestrians. That sort of thing.
Okay, okay.
Because the chief of police said there's not any sufficient data to be putting up slower signs or anything, and so uh, it was asked, we had two visitors at the community members and they launched a radar put on the the north side of the hill because they felt that's where the problems were happening. And so she said he would do that and take about two weeks of data from the. Actually, we needed to do something or the data didn't support it.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Um, any other updates or reports?
I was at a town for uh, community foundations, meaning this, so I wasn't able to attend, but I did I noticed that they're uh working on active, they're actively looking for people to participate on the board. But they have pretty, it's pretty specific. Actually, Counselor Caseman was on the list of potential.
Oh, they have like, do they have like a target?
Yeah, they have some. I don't want to, maybe it's a spoiler and somebody's gonna be okay. But uh, yeah, bu- business acumen, I think is what they were. So I, anyway, that that is a thing that they're working on, kind of a a board for the future, there are quite a few members are aging out. And then they're also working on a policy for being, because it is the Philomath Community Foundation. Some of the members are moving out of the area and then like it's, it's pretty okay for a while to like zoom in and support and do your role, but at some point it starts to get a little weird.
Sure.
Um, so they're, they're developing guidelines for that, I think. And and then much, you know, and then helping administer funds throughout our community. That's for you.
Yeah, wonderful.
Yeah, for the kind of mission.
Yeah, yeah. Yes. Um, I'll just say that's, I mean, it's been summer, so the school district has been quiet, um, but they swore in their two new um school board members, um Aaron McMillan and Tom Clipbell were both sworn in and then Aaron Gudge, there's now two Aaron two women named Erin on the school board, so that'll be fun. Um, it's not, you guys have no idea what it's like to have two people with the same name sit next to each other at a meeting. Um, but anyway, um, Aaron Gudge is the new chair of the school board and Tom Clipbell was elected vice chair. So um, I anticipate we'll be working with them. Um, and then things are going pretty well at the fire district. I wasn't able to go to their meeting today, so I don't have any super timely updates, but um they're working through their their business. They're, they've had plenty of folks going out to different congregations, but it seems like all has been going well, so um yeah, the, um, speaking of the cog, since I'm also on the cog board, I think they're having their like all-staff picnic on maybe the twentieth, so um think, yeah, you know, if you're looking for some food. Well, but again, but is it in everyone's compensation? Cause if not.
Attorney.
You're so right. And then I'll also just say, if you haven't seen um Senator Ron Wyden will be doing town hall at Philomath High School, I think also on August twentieth at four P M, um, which I will just say, you know, regardless of politics or or, you know, positions on things, I think Philomath is really fortunate that in this one calendar year, we will have had town halls with both of our U S senators and our Congresswoman. Um, and that is not a thing that a lot of towns of six thousand people can say, so um I would encourage us all to be there, not talk about city business and um, you know, encourage our community to show out and and be there, because I also, I would hate for it to be a town hall in Philomath that is just a bunch of people from Corvallis. So, um.
The other town hall was so well.
It was, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think it was the most I've ever seen.
Is that a thing that we have anything to do with or are we just on?
A little.
Are we getting noticed or are you guys reaching out or what's happening?
Um.
Sure things.
Yeah, so our police staff does assist um them with uh coverage for law enforcement. They'll often ask the mayor um to maybe help say a few words.
So they asked me to do enforcement.
Enforcement, say a few words.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe enforcement, I don't know. About that. Um, and then.
Yeah.
What are they select here? Um, I think that they've had good experiences with our facilities and our law enforcement and the turnout here. I think that we're easy to work with.
Yeah, I talked to Wyden's staff and they basically were like, yeah, we were trying to schedule something in Corvallis. But then Philomath like actually responded to our emails.
Perfect.
And was like, so for now, and then the police department also responded, so I think it's just, yeah, but.
The matter of us being available and.
I think so, and yeah.
And I think it's an opportunity for.
Absolutely, yeah, I think, I think, like I said, here right now, not a lot of congressional town halls are. Like I said, here, right now, not a lot of congressional town halls are happening. So the fact that we get all of them. So anyway, just again, that's August twentieth, four PM, Philomath High School auditorium. So. I'll hope to see you there if you're able to make it. Any other council reports? Okay, oh, yeah, please, sorry.
The Frolic.
Yes.
Still kind of regrouping on after a big event. I mean, it will be held this Thursday, but they do have another event. At the Frolic grounds, the bull riding event is Saturday the twenty third coming up, and that should be something fun that will, should bring in a lot of tourists. And other than that, I think that's my only report.
Perfect. Last call. Okay, you have your management report. Chris or Chelsea, do you have anything you want to really highlight in here?
Yeah, I could, I'll highlight and then if Chris is there, I want to chime in. I did want to point out that Chris and. Our other planning staff met with our new contracted planner. So that's been going really well. Her name's Laura LaRocque. She has a lot of planning experience and she's really hit the ground running. We've had, we're getting used to, she's not working on site, but she is holding some fairly regular office hours. She's very responsive. We've just been working on. Connecting her through phones and, and such, and so that she's able to respond to people. So that's been great. On the lines of Wyden, Chris and I did meet with Wyden and Merkley's staff members last Thursday. Just kind of an informal meeting. They were checking in with us. That was a really great meeting. We were able to share some things that we're working on here and. Just, you know, any kind of, they asked us a lot about concerns that we might have for federal funding. Thankfully, we're not seeing a lot of that, but some other areas are. And then tariffs, if our businesses are being affected by that. And just shared some news with them about what's going on in Philomath. So that was great. And then just wanted to point out that Chief Gersky and the other officers, but especially Chief Gersky has been really getting out there and participating to the. Fraud and scam prevention presentation, I know with the senior group, which was great. And then was flipping burgers too. At Citizens Bank and.
If you drive by on the wall, there's a little black spot where he almost lit the.
Oh, there you go. So he left his mark.
His officers came by and got a picture.
And I just wanted to say thank you to staff and counselors and such, the mayor who was able to participate. In National Night Out. That was a great event and we had, you know, good representation there, I think.
Chris, anything you want to add on management?
That I miss being there with you tonight. And we have a very great and capable assistant city manager who hit everything that I was gonna hit. And appreciate her filling in tonight and appreciate Ashley being there as well. So. Sorry not to be there. Got to show off Old Faithful to my kids today for the first time. They got to see Old Faithful go off and see some more geysers. So. I appreciate you letting me be away on a little bit of family vacation. We're having a good time.
Thank you, Chris. We miss you too. Yeah, don't fall into the geyser.
Lots of graphic signs around warning people to not fall into geysers. I've been taking pictures of all of them. They're pretty funny.
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay, you'll see the monthly financial report in your pocket and then no sort of new correspondence, our usual stuff. Any final thoughts for the good of the order? Okay, then I think we are planning to have a second meeting this month, as far as I know. So we'll have a second meeting of this month and then we'll have a first meeting of September, but we will not be having a second meeting in September. Because I will be out of town. So then I texted Counselor Nielsen and was like, hey, you're up for the second meeting in September. She said, oop, I will also be out of town. So as a result, we're not having a council meeting. So. Just make sure you are aware of that. But if there's nothing else, then we will adjourn this meeting at nine fourteen PM.